Good evening, and thank you all for joining us this evening. This is an informal public hearing for the Board of Alderman to discuss some of the dangerous sandwiches in the city of St. Jerry. We will all begin, and I get a chance to sign up if you wanted to talk. It looks like we have about thirteen people on the list. So if we could try to limit it to, if we say somewhere around five minutes, if you could, that would put us right at an hour or so. Again, this is a hearing, this is not a debate. The Board's here to listen to your comments and your suggestions. We're not going to make, the Board's not in a position tonight to make any kind of a decision on what to do, what issues to change, or make any changes to the ordinance. So they'll take that up at the next meeting. Again, we just want to hear your comments, any suggestions that you've got. We've also gotten a number of letters the Board has by email, some for specific legislation, some against. We've got copies of them if anybody wants to see them. And just remember, I think everybody agrees, certainly at the meeting that we had, the last Board meeting, or the Board meeting before, this is really, this is not an amendment against St. Jerry. This is really all about responsibility and responsible pet owners. That's where it really all boils down to, and whatever we need to do to try to make that happen, I think that's what the Board's going to have to decide and try to make that happen. So with that, I'll start with the first person. Again, if you would come up, and come up to talk, just so everybody knows who you are and form of record, if you'd come up to the podium, and state your name and your address, we appreciate that. So first on the list is Mr. Bob Rowley.
Our owner was a cat, male owner. He was chasing a lady, and it came after him, and he was still chasing her. But hours later, I called, and the dog was still out chasing me. I said, "Very likely, the dog was in the park, and the dog was still out chasing me." I'm not sure if there's no, no, there is, but I don't know. And the dogs dragged him onto the street. That's why my dog was never hurt. But it can't, it makes it quite a turn, they don't. The majority of people think they have rights to stick their dogs out of their lives, when the public is, they think, this is the safety issue. And it's been, my dog, he was bitten by a dog, and it's something totally wrong with him. It's because of that, right? And his pit bulls, I know what the dog was basically, how the pit bulls, and the dogs were beaten, clamped down, never mustered, nervous. The dog, so strong, that they can kill. You gotta try and draw on the earth, they had in their mouth, trying to think that. That's dangerous with pit bulls. That's why I asked you, please, ban the pit bulls. And we do, man, please, don't give the rabid dogs a life. Because that means like saying, okay, let's quote, "That's silver, isn't it?" Not a rabid. I can see a service, I love it if it's a pit bull. But don't let the pit bulls back in, yeah, please. Okay? They could be, anyone here, family, your kids, family. Yeah, they're good, walking down the street, climbing your own bed, getting business from all. That's what I'm trying to say, I thought we asked you, guys, please, just for safety, if you don't want to, do something about it. And the pit bulls, it's been gathered all over the earth. There's less than a city in the United States that's either pushing out some burning, arched structures, outright, deadly. Pit bulls, that's what I'm asking.
Steve, Sheila?
My name's Steve Sella, I'm from Perry County, Missouri. My wife and I are the founders of Ruffel Grace Weave. And I first of all, I'd like to thank you all for having me so before, like you are, shows that you all want to take responsibility for what goes on in your community and things like that. But pit bull ban, and there's a lot of articles, there's a lot of information statistics that you can follow, that it specifically has said that the banning of the breed just doesn't work. It can end up costing you significant money, which you said at opening of the meeting, I thought was spot on, which is, the owners need to take responsibility for animals. Your police officers can do their part as far as picking up the dogs and things like that, but if they pick them up, write reports, it doesn't go beyond that. It's not everyone's work for it all. You have to be, I don't want to say more hard on the owners, that you guys get across, you've got to take care of the animals, you've got to be responsible for the animals, and if you're not, then you go ahead and pay. And it's not just for this area, we work all the counties surrounding the area, Perry County, helping out with the Grace Weave, things like that. We see it in every county, and the end reach all against the prosecution of the people. They look at it like it's a dog, it doesn't matter, throw it off in the corner, it's forgotten, it's not forgotten. We've had all these in Perry County, the same as you all have up here, and it's not simply a breed, it's the people, it's behind the animal. And we work fighting dogs, we have bait dogs, we have bait dogs out there at the kennels right now. In about three or four days of work with these animals, you'll see the change. And it's basically like anybody else would do, if you had a choice, to fight or die, you want to fight, and that's what these dogs are forced to do. And we need to open up our eyes and realize this is going on in all these counties. To set up a fighting, it doesn't take five minutes, four pieces of wire, and then a guy stand behind him, throw the dogs in, and let them go. And so, in a matter of twenty minutes, a muddy bill that crossed out of here to county and suburb of the city happens there. We was involved in a four-state ring that we broke up, my wife and I, made a study out of Missouri, and personally, in that county, in Perry County, was fined a hundred dollars and forty yard tuition. And that's where the problem is. You need to take responsibility if you can. I think a breed-specific law doesn't stop, if that, I'm not here to convince anybody or change anybody's mind, all I'm saying is, if a Jamal comes up and bites you, is that vicious animal? You know, where do you stop the breed? You know, any dog might, it's out of taking care of it. And if we can do anything to assist you all and help out, we're just, from all the way we've come up here all the time, and we'd be happy to help out if there's anything we can do. I appreciate you all listening, thank you very much.
I'm here to speak, Mr. Mayor, and as a member of the City Council. I'm honored to be here tonight. My name is Robert Ryan, I live up in fifteen point four Mill Lane, Austin, Missouri. Ryan, I was growing up and raised cattle here in the same county for generations. I'm here tonight to support a cause very close to my heart, and I like to see this people say, "Oh, creatures of the claws," like so many other Missourians. I have never worked in the animal-related field, and honestly, I've never really had much experience with animals other than family pets, and fun, and my wife Manny, she was always working in the animal field. I have learned a lot from her. Before I knew much about dog breeds, I was a little concerned about pit bulls. It's kind of the same story in the media about pit bulls attacking people, and they always looked scary. Well, that started to change when I first met my dog, Jett. He's a black, black, that makes, he's old gray, and always has blankets on. He's afraid of loud noises, and he won't go outside by himself at night, he's afraid of the dark. The story about my dog, Jett, said, he doesn't look like a very pit bull, like, but he's just like a foxy head. And that, because of that, he was on most recentized day on the whole street in Missouri. My wife is working as a vet technician, and she received a peto request on a dog that was fighting a car. She goes out, picks him up, he's straight, he's not playing. And the vet said, "Since he's a pit mix, we need to euthanize him by law." He is lethal. My wife are broken, this dog was even a year old, and he was going to be killed, he was sent to jail. He had someone who broke him leg, and that showed any aggression to the animal staff, she called her brother and arranged a meetup. She pleaded with her boss, and he agreed, as long as my wife were removed from the city limits. After the rescue, Jett has lived with her mother and father, and now is an old gray dog. He's never bitten anyone, has never had any issues. He was spared because someone called for him, and I am here to help those dogs save Jenny from dying. After meeting Jett, marrying my wife, I started learning more about its topic. Then a Staffordshire terrier fox, it makes name, Zeno, my heart. My wife and I adopted her when my wife was working at the call. Zeno was picked up in a bad harvest, they called me. She has a history of abusing the midwife. I quickly noticed in my grade of two's in, death. Zena has to have a life of all time, she likes to be one of the lions. She's a great storm, a lot of noises in her chickens. She's pretty much a big lapdog, attentional wise, of all time. After becoming a pit bull owner, with this Staffordshire terrier, I really began to become upset with these people. One, pit bulls need to breed, but in the broader term, there's over thirty breeds. And two, I was hurt that somebody gave a city's target a breed, when multiple enacted these laws, more than twice. Pessimist about a breed they didn't know much about, and with no actual experience regarding animals, not hoping like myself, you'll see that breed has a bad reputation for being heightened, and is not good resources like dogs by that order. My wife used to come home angry, and have the workers, reporters, they had to just manage to report pit bull came up at all, they would ask me to do a pit bull event. On one occasion, my wife was getting a breed, small mixed breeds, running large, bit, and injured between people, they also attacked pit bulls on a leash. The pit bulls didn't fight back, but listened, and so was the pit bulls owner. My wife was trying to work the scene, reporters calling her nonstop, and she killed them, the pit bulls, the dog, and the victim, the reporter, seven thousand. If you notice, every reporter that's approached me has not had experience in animal-related field. The fourth man is based on two things, media height and fear, first of all, negative experiences, and understanding. Everything we have in our life, it just isn't a way, it's a big deal, it's a big issue. My wife's not involved in any art for us, some people, some other are creative, some don't experience things, but she doesn't think the breed because of, she turns a perspective towards irresponsible pet owners, and all of you should too. I am incredibly grateful to the city, I don't desire, I desire the business for me. When we bought our house, that's the first thing we checked. I would not spend money inside a city that has breed-specific laws. Here on the fence on this issue, I recommend that you visit your local animal shelter, often yes, but experts, that meet these dogs, you will be affected, that you will be affected with this law. Thank you guys all for listening tonight.
Mandy, your honor.
First, I'd like to thank you for having me here tonight. I'm here tonight to see the St. Jerry, it's been in my life since I was a baby. I'm a member of the Rock's Family, and they have been in St. Jerry for generations. I've also worked in the animal field for about fourteen years now. I started as a dog walker at fourteen years old, and became as a standard account. I've also worked as a vet technician. I've worked in various shelters, I've fostered and nursed the animals, and I've been a doctor. But most important thing, I have worked with the animal law enforcement. I was an animal control officer in the Columbia, Missouri, I've been behind the Missouri. In this line of work, I enforce all animal laws, that includes vicious dog laws and animal cruelty laws. Now, one critical source is improving breed-specific laws to work. They actually intend to compromise rather than enhance public safety. Now, I take public safety very seriously. When your resources as a field officer are used to enforce breed bans or restrictions, your focus gets redirected from where it should be, and that's not keeping the public safe. It gets taken away from effective enforcement of laws, and have the best chances of making the city safer, and instead it gets focused on laws that improve and infect it, and improve and hurt cities. They hurt cities because they are expensive and they're difficult to enforce. Breed identification is not accurate by appearance alone, even by the experts. Breed-specific laws also encourage irresponsible ownership. As certain breeds are regulated, people who want to get a dog and think it's dangerous are likely to turn to just other unregulated breeds. In other words, vet owners will always be bad owners, despite the breed they own. You also run into the issue of, again, criminals of irresponsible owners, finding the product owning an illegal breed desirable. According to the ASCA, the rise of pit bull ownership among gang members in the late nineteen eighties coincided with the first round of breed-specific laws. This was the time period where breed bans and breed-specific laws went along. But what started as just pit bulls being banned has now turned into something pretty ridiculous that I'm looking at. Now, Dobermans, German Shepherds, Nikitas, Chows, and other breeds have all become targets of breed bans. Many Missouri cities like Troy started out banning pit bulls, and now have a long list of banned breeds. Where does it end? It's a domino effect. If you pass this, your dog could be next. Banning any breed takes focus away from what your focus should be, and that's punishing the irresponsible owners and getting vicious dogs and any breed off the streets. In my line of work, I did work with quite a few vicious dogs. I had close calls myself with all breeds, and I can tell you that any vicious dog can and will hurt you, especially a large-sized vicious dog. Don't move backwards in public safety and animal law. This is not the answer, and this is not how you prevent more attacks like what recently happened. The owners should be held responsible. In my old jurisdiction, I was, knowing this case, I would be seizing his dogs, his or her dogs, and I would be fighting my court trying to get them banned from owning animals. But instead of focusing on the owner of these dogs, you're now focusing on every owner of one breed class, as pit bulls not actually a breed within the class of breeds. Including people like myself, responsible owners. I do own an American Staffordshire terrier, right? Like my husband said, she is afraid of her chickens and the dark. She would be classified as a pit bull owner, anything pit bull ban, she would not be welcome to visit my grandparents when I come to visit them here through past this. She is my sunshine, and I have rescued her in the field, so I repeat that. It logically does not make sense. It doesn't make sense to the experts here, apparently, either. Organizations like the CDC, the American Bar Association, the ADMA, the National Animal Control Association, and the AKC have all taken public stance against breed-specific legislation. These are the experts. Another thing you may or may not be aware of is that this year, there would have, there was a statewide bill, Missouri House Bill 1811, that died in the Senate. This bill would have prohibited laws like one year per puppy. It passed in the House, one hundred and seventeen yes votes, and only seventeen no votes, and overall, a majority. Twenty-two other states already have laws like this law. And like I said before, the norm now is repealing breed bans. Blackmarien has just repealed their breed ban, and Richmond, right before that repeal theirs. The statewide bill would have also passed the Senate if it found statute, but one senator fell over personal reasons. This bill is coming back, and it is going to reintroduce in January of two thousand seventeen. If you pass this, it might be legal. Light your officials focus on resources on your dangerous dog ordinance, keeping dogs' dangers based on behavior, not breeding. Please not punish responsible dog owners like myself, and address them with a compliment handed, irresponsible pet owners.
Thank you. Kevin Beck.
First, I want to say, I don't really know how we got convinced of ban-specific idea, but just the right. I'm not sure. Something in the light of hope, and I am for enforcing the rules of behavior. It's not a dog problem. Responsible people will have responsible dogs. We need to raise the fines. If your dog licenses is ten dollars, they have until March or wherever, if they don't have it, every group of leagues should be ten dollars for it. If your dog gets caught loose, it should be fined, it should be held. If it's a second time, a third time, you pound the dog, fine it again. If it happens again, to your community and society, obviously, don't let it, the protection of the day care of it. The big article, I think, over two hundred dogs, and you lose two, there is obviously a problem. So you need to, you know, just be careful.
You may have to yell it.
I don't care if it's a guy, it's a girl, if he's, as long as he takes care of it. Like I said, it's a people problem, it's not really a dog problem. My wife's out there every day, she thinks it's got worse. In the last few years, they, her ratio would have gone down, and that, Saturdays are worse than any days. More people at home, more people let their dogs loose. We just need to enforce the rules. I really don't know what else to say, besides, get on the ball, John. Make sure our dogs, the girl, at the last meeting that stood, I was already going, she stood here and said, "I didn't know we didn't have a dog license." I had two, two peaches. Maybe people don't know they're supposed to have licenses. I think we can do better. You know, I think the only way to get responsible dog owners is punish unresponsible owners.
I don't want to rehash much of the issues that we brought up, there's a bunch of good points from all sides tonight. Any loose dogs are an issue for us. So large dogs are more of a concern than the small. I would like, something that I kind of thought about, brought up at the last meeting, was they talked about the collars on the dogs, and the tags. So you could visually see the tags, right now, I didn't know, but I was unaware of that. Right now, you had a dog, and if they have to license them every year, that changed colors, just like the tags on your car, that would be something that maybe make it a little easier for the officers to see, if the guy's dog has been, had shots, or whatever it needs to have. One of the things I have heard, and I'm not breed-specific, really doesn't matter, the dog that bites is our problem. And so, we're not necessarily against pit bulls, I'm more against any large dogs, simply because that's the ones that can do the damage and hurt somebody more. But I've heard everybody up there talking, and they talk about the dogs, and they talk about the dog owners, responsible and irresponsible, but the one thing I've heard anybody talk about it is about the victims, the people that get dog damage. So that is a real concern, because that person has to live with that for a long time. I got two people that have, I've been a carrier mail every day, and that is the first thing on their mind, I'll guarantee. So keep that in mind with whatever you decide to do. I have to agree, I think that the proudest ever penalty, maybe it mandatory, you know, if nothing else, get them in the pocket, that will make you think about it. So that's, that would be my biggest concern, would be, if you see somebody, like you say, hit a one, two, three strikes, or whatever it needs, but not a twenty-five dollar fine, not a fifty dollar fine. If they don't have their shots and all that, I would say, hit them pretty hard, you know. But it's not just about the dog and the dog's owners, it's about everybody, the victim dog. That's really all I, appreciate your time.
Melissa.
It's burger, a hamburger. Here we go. We are at a work session before. I think that, my dad was a politician for twenty years, so he's driving.
How you doing? Was it work, though?
Anyway, I don't have a lot to say, I didn't really think, I just found out, I'm sorry. Anyway, I just found out a few days ago about this, and I was asked for a ban, because it's a very good example of what, ninety-nine point nine percent of the pit bulls, that responsible people, all in one. And I agree with everybody, you know, it is the, it is the owners. Myself personally, I'm now, I've advanced less than two years, and I fostered him, and I myself was a little wary, and I had four of the dogs, and when I started fostering, and they're like, it's a pit bull, you know, I was like, well, I met him, I fell in love with him, and about six months after that, when they said, "We're having adoption of him," and I said, "Well, I think he's coming home." And, I mean, I just, I'm an advocate, and because I really believe that it is irresponsible owners, and if you really, like the postmaster said, you play at these people's pockets. I mean, and if you feel like you need to license a pit bull, whatever you need to do, my point is, is that it's not the dog. If you have a dog running around, it's going to bite someone, and how can you just all of a sudden say, "Well, we're going to take it out, we're going to, it's all pit bulls." They've done many, many test runs, did it those gentlemen, and they actually have better gentlemen than over a hundred, fourteen hundred breeds of dogs. So anyway, I have a whole lot to say, but I was asked to come down, show off my beautiful dog, and, you know, this is a beautiful city, you have the historic background, you have awesome place, and I just, you know, just can't see you guys, you know, discriminating these dogs. Anyway, thank you, and please consider.
Chase Martin.
I was not all the games, you want to hear a talk, because my wife was one of them that I did. I'm not going to say anything, other than, a couple weeks ago, my wife got ran into her mail chief by a dog, which happened to be the same owner that got her the first time. So apparently, whatever the fine was the first time, it wasn't enough, okay? I am not against ban, breed banning, I love all dogs, it's responsible owners. Problem, I just think you need to get it worked out, okay? That's all I got to say.
Stephanie Hoss.
My name is Stephanie Hoss, I'm a resident of the county of St. Jerry County.
I have a new citizen St. Genevieve. I'm currently in the honor of three rescue dogs, two of which are from shows, some sort of picnics. One was dumped at our farm, One State Park, loved the baby to die. My current rescue puppy was thrown out of a moving vehicle. I take these dogs as lack of responsibility. Any dog, of any size, that is love to run, that is discharged to fend for itself in the wild, is a problem. So, to me, breed specifically is backwards, doesn't make any sense, it doesn't seem very practical to law enforcement force. And my dogs are very loving, and much like the others, they don't have ETS, they appear to be almost, they're scared in the dark, they're super hypersensitive, but they are not idle, and they are not fidgets. I have heard of dogs who lose their temperature and get gagged and bite. Big dogs that can bite, it really comes down to the training and responsible ownership. In the county, it's a positive, and within the city of St. Genevieve, I have experienced a irresponsible ownership, where dogs will break into a corner. It does happen, there are meaty dogs that will escape even with their responsible owner, but the penalties, they do need to pay. They do need to be forced to be responsible, whether it means paying for a tag in the county, paying for a tag in the city, however you want to enforce it, but I do encourage the responsible, the responsible penalty. That's all. Thank you.
Stephanie.
Forehand.
Forehand, oh, I'm sorry.
Hi. I really appreciate you guys who are this over the line, so people can express all sides of the issue. A lot in my background, I have a degree in agriculture, but minor in animal behavior. I have worked for veterinarians, I have done dog training, I do rescues, and I have been bit. I have been bit by two chows, three shih-tzus, four dogs, and a chihuahua, three horses, and a llama. You have to be trying to get bit by a llama, just so you know. And, I have a pit bull. Now, you know, one day, let my dogs out in the morning to go potty, brought them back in, and I started counting heads. And there was an extra one. This gorgeous red-nosed pit came running in, popped up on the couch, and said, hi, I live here now. My daughter was five at the time, so the first thing I did was temperament testing, to make sure we don't have any food aggression, we don't have toy aggression, these things, you don't know, you don't know. I loved it. We had him for two years, when we got home late one night, and she went to open her car door and get out, and the dog growled at her. Now, she's grown up with this dog, she knows this dog. She's smart, she shuts the truck door, and I went around to see why. A lot of times, we miss the why. There was a copperhead coiled up right where her foot would have landed when she got out of the car. He kept her from being bit. And, last summer, he actually got 12 copperheads in a robbery. His instinct is to protect his people. Now, for every wonderful pit like him, there are some that are quite irresponsible people. Now, you have all sorts of irresponsible people. You have irresponsible trainers. I can have beer, you can have a margarita, but the next guy, he has ten beers, and gets goosebumps. It's all a matter of being responsible for yourself. Now, I know you've talked about fines, I want to also propose an alternative to fines. The American Petal Club has a title called the Canine Good Citizen Title. What it is, is a sixty-goat obedience course. At the end of the course, the dogs are required to pass a test. It has fifteen parts. They get through passing another dog on leash, greeting a stranger, perform a sit, perform a bow, moving approach by a child. So, this is something that you could possibly imagine as a second offense, is now you need to go to an obedience class. Not only are you getting them to potty, but you're taking their time. And if they decide this animal has outworked their time and their rights, maybe they'll be going to find a rescue program for it. Now, as we all know, pet rescues are bull. But, if we gather, we find homes for more and more of these dogs, it's just a matter of finding what works in this town. Thank you all for your time.
Samantha Wisniewski.
I'll take them. Never as an associate. Okay, so, evening, guys. So, by marriage, I suppose I can speak for my wife, I guess. But, so, we're new to town here, we moved into town, lived last, about a year and a half ago. Both of us grew up with dogs, we love the town that we have here, and we've lived here. We're both from Wisconsin, where I feel like annual ownership laws are probably slightly more relaxed, just based on the number of large cities. You know, you have the, I'm in St. Louis, where we moved to from, Wisconsin, lived there for a number of years, before moving down here. You hear on the news all the time about pit bulls. I don't think I can really offer anything new in terms of the ideas in regards to the breed, which actually isn't even a breed itself, except that we bought a, from a shelter, we got a German Shepherd, a Border Collie, when we moved down here and established our home. And then, a couple years later, it came down that we found a mix, that we got from a woman who had purchased a small, beautiful, female dog. We believe probably has some of the pit in her. We've got a seven-year-old daughter, my wife is currently pregnant. I'd like to reiterate, I think a lot of it is, in fact, training. Like I said, we both grew up with dogs. Some of the only pros to the idea of actually passing an ordinance against this specific dog breed, it's come from a gentleman that did have very, I mean, he had the, you could take those apart, but his major issue with it was that he had called, he said 30 times about a specific dog owner. Nothing happened. Now, I'm not even pointing at the law enforcement community, which I've talked to most of them, and they're all fantastic people, in my experience. I think it's possibly the way it's approached. I've noticed, living here a year and a half, there's far more dogs running around, if you're a member of the Facebook group, the What's Going On in St. Genevieve, every day there's a dog just running around on one of the local highways, and we live in a community where someone picks it up, puts it in the car, and actually puts a notice on Facebook in that group about that dog. They don't just drive past it, they say, hey, I found your dog. The fact that that happens every single day, every two days, regardless of the breed, I mean, that's a possible issue, where then people are addressing, hey, we need to start taking dog ownership into account here, because I've also met dog owners that don't need, based on their training, you know, they can walk around with their dogs without a leash, they can do whatnot. From the things that I've heard, my point being, is I feel like it's really an issue with dog ownership and the responsibility of the owner themselves, and the repercussions that come thereof, of not having your dog vaccinated, you know, shots up to date. If I was driving around in my car, with a couple 40s in both hands, on my cellphone, my seatbelt flashing on the window, I would get pulled over. If I did that numerous times, I would have my license taken away. I don't see why that's any different than owning a dog, or raising your child, for instance, because your dog is part of your family. So, I feel like it's more like just how we approach the people that actually do cause issue within the community, not just take their dog away, but just talk to them, you know, have someone come up and talk to them about why that might be happening. You know, I'm sure they might have their own reasons, whether they're good or bad, but if they are bad, let's just address those reasons, you know, sure, not all these dog owners are bad people, you know, probably something going on, like with the trials in terms of home, or, you know, they're part of the family. So, I feel like it's not breed specific, which this issue is pointing something that's not even, you know, in essence, a breed itself. You can have a chihuahua that bites anyone, or a dog suit that bites anyone that's not the owner, you know, my parents have twelve dog suits, some compete when you touch them, some will limit you, others will cuddle up and leave you, and cuddle up and fling you. So, I feel like it's really just, let's look at the owners that are the issue, I feel like this problem only legitimately, and I don't know most of you guys, but it's worth to mean most of you, but probably, we don't agree, that there might be, without pointing fingers, probably half a dozen people in this entire town, from what I've heard, talking to all these dog owners, that might be some of them, we just want to talk to, find out why they are training up their dog, or training a product. And obviously, if that's the issue, let's set up some forces or whatnot, that, you know, we can address that, I think it's, that's right. Thank you.
Thanks, we'll save the best for last, Ed Latrell.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Ed Latrell, 399 North Main, St. Genevieve, and I own pit bulls for 18 years, born and raised them. My pit bull's name's Thor. I'm glad the dog catcher didn't get up here, because he can tell you what the fines cost, because I paid. I think the next time my dog gets picked up, it'll be $180. Male carrier's known my dog pit bull, I found out, Thor, I found out about this meeting tonight, because the male lady pulled up, the male lady pulled up, came back up, and looked on my porch to see if Thor was there. And it was a funny meeting, and I said, what did you do to that person? She said, I'm just checking on Thor, they know her. I introduced my dog to the community around me, a lot of them, he's on electric leash. I don't know if any of you are familiar with electric leashes, but it takes a special dog, a well-disciplined dog, to pay attention to that little shot. The only reason he doesn't cross it, because he knows he shouldn't. Back in the 19th century, they were called manly dogs in England. Even over here in the United States, they were called manly dogs. You have to understand the pit bull. Now, to be honest with you, it's a macho dog, and that's kind of what happens in the image of the pit bull. And they're not like paying $400 for a walking propeller, $600 for a pyridis. But I can go over, this lady just had her face tuned off, that had the first face plant surgery in the world, it was a labrador retriever, it was hers. Pretty close to where I live, they got two pyridis. Now, if you know dogs, pyridis is, in my book, are the most dangerous dog breeds. They're territorial. Well, the owner went on a camping trip, these pyridis just went across the fence, and bit a young boy, drugged him off his pipe. His dad was there. I don't hear this mentioned tonight. I'm a plumber in town, and I go to a lot of homes. There's homes I refuse to go in because of their dogs, they're not big. They were such a vicious dog, we would hear the owners of the dogs, kids getting bit, kids coming over to spend the night getting bit. Now, I know that when they get out, my dogs that left the collar, and the dog catcher down there, I don't know what was happening, but when they caught him, the collar was off. The neighborhood kids let him go a few times. And I'll say, one time, he was down on St. Mary's Road trying to get in the house, and the lady opened the door, scared to death of him, but she didn't panic, you know, he didn't do anything wrong, he just wanted a drink, but he's got his ears clipped, and he's got his tail up. I've been to the pit bull fights in Chicago, I've been down to Sykes where they're banning it, they shouldn't, because you had people fighting. Our little community, we don't have that. I heard that police have been called third in time for this dog. Yes, bans are covered, I've got them all painted in doors, every year that he's got his tag, I've got them. It's a wonderful idea, the lady said, as much as once they're violated, there's tests, there's tests of dogs, I know it, the one test I use when they're puppies, I push them down. In the pit bull family, which, you know, isn't a breed, is not recognized, they try to get up, it's aggressive, aggressiveness, it takes a little bit more training. I wanted to bring my dog here tonight to show you, I've worked with him for three years, but people in the neighborhood are amazed of discipline he has. And, you know, I could have told him to sit, he'd stay, he won, he won a contest in the dog park, he was around 30 other dogs when it first opened. I think it's bad to do breed, I wish, the police officers, I wish one would come up and talk, they drive around town, they see the dogs. My Thor is so sharp, that if he gets away, and he probably gets out of my yard, I'll be honest, he'll probably get out of my yard once every four months, he knows the sound of my mane, and then one lap, he's in the yard before I am. So, they're harder to find, don't be thinking that the police officers, you know, they can't spend eight hours looking for a dog, but once they catch them, they need to kick up the fines. I think, I start off by paying $35, well, I think I'm up to $185 now, which my dog. And I want to put him in a bed room, because they can't afford him. There was some good points made tonight, I think we need to look at the people, I think the ball's been dropped, you know, on our laws, we're not gonna obey our laws, but how are you gonna find the pit mixes? You know, we've got people mixing these dogs that are, that you just won't know. They're excellent hunting dogs, just somebody you go lower, you're welcome to come up in my yard, and, you know, anything.
Anybody else that did sign up, want to say anything, certainly welcome to you. Okay, well, thank you all, I certainly like to recognize tonight, Police Chief Ben, Sheriff Stolzer here, and Officer Barnby, Animal Control Officer. Obviously, everybody is concerned and wants to do the best job that we can, take care of this issue, concerns the people, they wouldn't be here tonight if they weren't concerned about it also. So, thank you guys for coming, appreciate that.
I just want to thank the people who came here tonight. I've had mixed emotions about this for the last thirty-four weeks, and I really enjoyed everything you said tonight, it opened my eyes a lot, some things I never thought about before, and I really do thank the people for coming out, I mean that.
Yes, absolutely, there were some good ideas tonight, I don't know that any of the board had thought about, but we'll certainly have some more discussions about it, and you'll be hearing from us, so, thank you.